No five, uh, thank you guys for being here. My name is Anna K. Brown and I'm one of the co-chair for the Jane and Finch Education Action Group. We're here tonight with our school board trustees. Just to have a conversation on and have a conversation with our community members and parents and guardians. And folks that have an interest in our education system and um. So the Jane and Finch Education Action Group wanted to definitely participate in a conversation like this in. In um especially over the last two years with many of the cuts and issues that um have been affecting our local schools in the Humber. River Black Creek area and also maybe how um our school board trustees can play a role into helping to. Bring in in resources, uh, funding and also to. Understand the concerns and the needs of our community members, not just our parents, but also our students. That are the ones that are with that are going to our schools and are um engaged through the process and how can we um also. Just to ensure that there is um a collective of our needs that are being as assess and address. But before we go into that, I definitely want to get into our housekeeping that um. We want to just ensure that everyone understand that this is a space that we want to to be respectful. So please, for now, most you guys will be muted until we open up the conversation um. To the participants to be able to ask their questions and uh please keep in mind, we'll we'll try to get to everyone's questions. And concern, please remain respectful um and respects other people's thoughts and and or their questions. And um we'll allow also a follow-up, but we just also want to just be able to get to other folks who might have questions. Alright, and another piece that we definitely wanted to do share around our principles um of the meeting for tonight. That the Jane and Finch Education Action Group has zero tolerance for any form of discriminations. Comments that are racist, sexist, ableist, ageist, homophobic and transphobic. Or stigmatizing and other indigenous, black, racialized and LGBTQ two S. Sorry, two S plus communities have no place in this event. And that or at any of our meetings, we're asking candidates and all participants to be respectful of our principle. Otherwise, we will interject and remove the person uh that makes such discriminatory uh comments from our meetings. So we just definitely want to just be clear about that, that this is a space for us to have conversation and please be respectful of each other. And um so thank you once again, guys, for being here. Um so just before we move into that. We will also um go into read the land acknowledgement. Anthony, um if you, if we can unmute Anthony, so he's able to read the land acknowledgement, that will be great. Hello? Anthony? Um guys, can we unmute Anthony?
Is it under Anthony, right? Okay, Anthony is right.
This land where we meet today has been inhabited for generations beyond our knowing. As we meet today, we recognize the historical territory of the Huron. Wendat, Peton, Seneca, the Anishna beg and the Shipua. This territory is covered by the dish with the spoon, Wampanoan belt covenant. An agreement between the Hadronish, the Hadishonony and the Ojibwe. And allied nations to peaceably share and care for the lands and resources around the Great Lakes. I also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by the Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Today, this region is home to many indigenous people from across Turtle Island. Including many survivors and intergenerational family members who have been impacted by the legacy of the residential school system. Today, we stand committed to be partners in healing, reconciliation and justice. As the primarily black racialized and migrant peoples in the Jane Finch community. We are striving for our community's access to resources, including lands for our. Community and the indigenous communities use in our collective action to um to obtain. Such resources, we are simultaneously demanding support for indigenous peoples from across Turtle Island and offer our solidarity. To land back and sovereignty movements. Many of us are in Canada involuntarily, particularly forcibly, the place Africans. Brought here as a result of the transatlantic slave trade and slavery, col- colonialism. As well as thousands of migrants and refugees from the global south. The struggles against colonialism, white supremacy and anti-indigenous and anti-black racism are our struggles too. As is our collective fight against capitalism. We are in everlasting solidarity with the struggles of indigenous peoples in Canada and around the world against the occupation. Of your lands for profit and power by brutal forces of colonialism, white supremacy and capitalism. Love, respect and solidarity.
Thank you so much, Anthony. If you can mute, that would be great. Alright. Once again, thank you, Anthony, um for reading the land acknowledgement. And um as we dive into why we're here, I want to introduce our candidates. Um in alphabetical order, so our first candidate is Nicole. And she is um running for um Ward four for the TDSB. Our second candidate is Mathias and he's also running for Ward four TDSB and our third candidate. Which is Ida La Pready and she is running for the TC DSB, which is the Catholic School Board, Ward three. So I definitely want to thank author of our candidates for being here. Um there is other candidates. Some of their information was very difficult to find um any contact information for.
Sorry, just one of the candidates of Kim. I cannot let her also be added uh as one of the calls.
Would that be uh Kim King?
Yes.
Okay, alright, sorry. And we do have our fourth candidate, which is Kim King, who is also running for Ward four for TDSB. Um so as I was saying before, we did have um some other candidates. But we did not have contact information for them. Some candidates did reach out to us. Um Kim King is one of those candidates who has also reached out to us to participate in tonight's events, so welcome. And um one moment, some big group today, yes. Okay, so I'm going to start with Nicole who's. Um since we're going to go in alphabetical order, um to just be able to just tell us a little bit about why she's running. Uh so you do have two minutes, Nicole. Um and we'll signal for you when this two minutes is up, please. Since we do, we do want to dive right into um the conversations and everything with community, so. Just tell us two minutes to why you're running and thank you.
Perfect. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Dyson. Bonjour à tous. Hola a todos. I'm running to be your public school trustee because I have met with school representatives, concerned parents, children, teachers. Early childhood educators and community activists, and they're all saying exactly the same thing. That the community of Humber River Black Creek is being ignored by the rest of the Toronto District School Board. And that the children in Humber River Black Creek are not being set up for success. There are no equipment at the schools that have been updated in many of them. There have also been crumbling infrastructure and classrooms that are in disarray. I'm also hearing from other concerned parties that the schools are simply not safe, so there's work to do. You will most likely hear tonight that I don't live in the ward and this is true. I live a stone's throw away from Keel and Shepherd and I do much of my business and support many local businesses as well. In Humber River Black Creek and have built very strong relationships with many of the constituents there. I have had a strong career in the private sector that I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about, so that you learn a little bit more about me. So I graduated from York University from their business school and immediately went to work in consulting at Deloitte and then afterwards in the banking sector. I have many transferable skills that will be extremely helpful should I be elected on Monday. Some of those skills include analytical skills, problem solving, working and leading with authenticity and courage. And most importantly, being able to build consensus and work with others and listen. I'm also a mom of two very young children, so I have a unique perspective on being able to understand what parents are going through as they select schools for their children. I am a breath of fresh air that is sorely needed in the ward and I believe that I have good ideas that can make some change, that I where I can make some positive changes. Another thing that I would like to mention tonight is just with regards to the TDSB role and what we can expect. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm going to spend my entire term advocating for more funding. Because we all know that the provincial envelope is already has a prescribed formula. We also know that this envelope will be very hard to change given the current government. There are other ideas that I have thought about where we can increase funding for schools that doesn't only rely on advocating for more money coming from the government. And I would like to pursue those ideas and talk to them, talk about them a little bit later on.
Thank you, Nicole. So sorry, thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You'll do get on other opportunities to expand. Thank you. Okay, and our next candidate is Mathias. Also, two minutes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so my name is Mathias Vicky and I'm running for the Toronto District School Board because education is very important to me. Uh, education is very important to me because it's the latter that allowed me to get ahead in life, coming from an immigrant family. Um, a from a single parent household without a lot of opportunities in life. Uh, I was able to uh do things in life because I was given opportunities. That a lot of kids in our neighborhoods today are not getting. Um, we're seeing a significant reduction in funding a year to year and our neighborhoods um are being affected. Uh, the most uh because of the demographics in the in the neighborhood, because of a number socioeconomic reasons. Alright, so I want to go there um to the school board to fight for our kids. Uh, to create better opportunities, to create partnerships and to bring in resources where needed. Um, I think it is very important for us to uh know and remember. And that uh we have some of the most diverse um population groups uh in uh the entire city. Uh, but we also have uh similar high sneak um and we're not getting uh a fair share of the pie. Uh, we don't have the same quality education. We're not providing the same quality opportunities for the kids here. Uh, that we're providing in other parts of the city and I want to fight that. Um, and I I think it's a very important part of the fight uh to take that uh conversation to the province and what they're doing. Uh, and to help organize parents, educate our communities about what's happening in our schools, because I feel like most of us don't really understand just how deep. Uh, those cuts are and how it's affecting our kids. Uh, when kids are having to share textbooks, when we don't have enough money for bus drivers, uh when we don't have enough money to fix uh the capital repair. A backlog in the schools. Um, and importantly, I also want to bring a different perspective. Uh, if I'm uh to be elected, I would be the first Latin American person to be elected into the Toronto District School Board in twenty-five years. Nineteen ninety-seven was the last time a Latin American person was elected uh to this position in the city of Toronto. Um, and I want to bring that perspective as well, the the perspective of uh of uh that immigrant uh family that came in. Uh, that is shared by so many of the kids uh in this neighborhood.
Thank you, Mathias. I'm so sorry. Thank you. You'll get a chance to expand. Ida, your two minutes, go.
I'll be less than two minutes. My name is Ida La Pready. I'm the current trustee for the Toronto Catholic District School Board. I'm a mother. I have three young boys. Um, I'm also a director on Toronto's Board of Health. That's been also a great privilege and honor for me. I've been um, I was the first trustee to sit on the Toronto Board of Health in seventeen years. So I've been really working collaboratively, I believe in collaborative partnerships with multiple stakeholders. I'm very excited to be at this table. And I will share my information later on, so if there's anybody in the community that wants to learn more about me, they can reach out to me directly anytime. Thank you so much and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Ida. And our fourth candidate is Kim, Kim King. Is she here?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kim King and I'm running for Toronto District School Board, trust Ward, excuse me, it's just yeah. Toronto District School Board Trustee, Ward four. Um, I first like to give a little bit of information about myself. I I've been around. Uh, most of you wouldn't know me because I've been in the background. I started my volunteer service in that ward over fifteen years ago. Working with the police department, starting with their scholarship bursary. Um, it escalated from there and to include the toy drive. Um, from there, I went on to work with JFC CO and Winston Rose. Essentially, I've done many different things. I'm not particular into one particular habit. I have many different areas of. Experience. I was born and raised in Toronto. Uh, what makes me unique to this group is I represent the majority of the people that actually go to school in this area. And on some level, I understand the systemic racism that they've faced over the years. Whether it be a long-term or short-term. I also worked with the Federation of Metro Tenants Association for Toronto. As well as the United Nations Association for Toronto. What makes me the best person for this job is essentially my life experience. Uh, right now, I work as a food access coordinator and I realize that food poverty is a real. Is a real issue and it seems to be on the rise and I'd like to see. If some, can you hear me? Sorry. Can hello?
Yes, yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Sorry. And I'd like to see a little bit, I'd like to see a lot more done about the the issue um going forward, especially as things seem to be getting tougher and tougher.
Alright, Kim, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Alright, um so now that we have had a small glimpse into um. A little bit of background information for the N R candidates. Thank you, Kim. No worries. Um, thank you so much. Um, and we're going to do open it up to participant to do maybe to ask questions. Um, and as I said, we do think this conversation is very important because you know, it is to. Figure out also where our school board trustee candidate stands on issue that matters to students, parents and our community. Um, how can school provide um better supports to students, parents and caregivers? And um obviously, you know, what are what are the biggest challenges or um schools in our community currently face? Are some of the things that um we know parents and caregivers are interested to figure out. And how we can problem solve on those and what needs to be done towards eliminating. Of um the elimination of systematic racism oppression within our policy practices and structures within public education system. So we are going to open it up to participants um to do ask your questions, please. Um, if you can. Limit to one question and do condense it so that we can get the question and get it answered. And if there's directly somebody that you want to ask the question to, if it's a general question, we'll, I'll give each candidate a minute to answer the question. Okay, so just give us a second just to set it up where um it would be great if folks can raise their hand. Butterfly, um Fareed and Kristen, if you guys can help with just kind of just helping with just letting us know who have questions. Alright, as we're waiting to set that up, um I guess I can just ask a very general question that all four of our candidates. Can answer. Um, over the last couple of weeks, um I know a lot of parents and caregivers have been asking questions. Regarding some of our schools and infrastructure issues. Um, maybe our candidates can give a little bit of insight on maybe what are some of the things that they can. As uh as our, if they're, if they're hopeful to get elected as a school board trustee, how they'll be able to address. Our current school infrastructure issues. So we can start with. Let's start with Nicole. So we'll keep it in out in in the order. And please let me know if you want me to repeat the question again.
No, no problem. I got it.
Okay.
So to address, to address the infrastructure issues, I think there's two possibilities that we could look at. So as I mentioned before, the funding envelope for the province is very difficult to adjust. So we might need to be able to look at alternate sources of funding in order to improve those infrastructure, in in order to get our infrastructure issues prioritized. So the Toronto District School Board has a very fixed budget that leaves very little room for variability. Eighty percent of the budget is fixed, that leaves twenty percent for the rest of the entire Toronto District School Board to prioritize what they want to get done. So my two ideas would be to finally levy the developmental charges that we have not been levying in the in the Toronto District School Board. Meaning that for every new condo or development that's built, the developer should be paying charges to support the school board. The city of Toronto, this Toronto District School Board rather, has not been collecting those charges. And there's work to do in order to get that pocket of money and to be able to push it towards improving infrastructure in our area. That's one. Another option obviously would be advocacy and letter writing to the Ministry of Education to get more funding. And the last option would be to take a look at some of the EQAO programs that we have within our schools. I I think that there's some work to do with EQAO and I think that there's some synergies that we could most likely realize. To be in order to take down those costs and be able to apply them to things like infrastructure in our ward.
Thank you, Nicole. Alright, we'll go over to Mathias.
Uh, I can go ahead. Um, the question is is complicated by the fact that the province actually. Has the purse strings and that's correct. Um, what I don't agree with is to say that simply we have to throw up our hands and we have to wait four years to. Uh, uh, have another provincial election, maybe then we can get money because we can actually organize, we can act, we can organize in our neighborhoods, in our schools. Uh, and and we can mobilize people to help them better understand what's happening in their schools. Uh, because what's happening is that we're actually taking money away every year and we have for a number of governments, right? So a a simple change of government may not be enough if there isn't uh the push by the public in order to change direction where we're going. Uh, and that needs to happen at the grassroots level and I think that's one of the priorities for me uh over the next four years, to help organize parents and to help. Uh, the different school communities understand what's happening. Um, a lot of folks don't understand that we're, that kids are sharing textbooks, thirty kids uh in a math classroom uh uh at Humber Summit. Uh, uh, for grade seven and there's ten textbooks only, things like that. Um, and that work is one part of it. Um, the the other part of it is uh to try and find partnerships and things and over my um. Terms and and work in the neighborhood, I've been able to secure partnerships that brought in um um music programs to Yorkwood. That brought in uh breakfast programs to schools like Driftwood, Brookview, uh Shorehand, Blacksmith. Um, and I'll continue to do that and we can't talk about alternatives, but ultimately, these are public schools. To look for private system solutions, whether it's a charity organization or donations, can only do so much and.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. My, yes, Ida.
Thank you so much. Anna, can you just repeat the question? Because it's about infrastructure, am I correct?
Yes, okay. It's about how do we address um the infrastructure issues in some of our schools around, um, yes.
Okay, so with the infrastructure, our board takes, we actually collect EDCs, we've been collecting EDCs and and we've been very grateful for them. Um, so we have been able to see in Humber River Black Creek a number of new developments, new schools. Um, we have St. Simon's, St. Basil's. Um, St. Andre and we've been creating uh through partnerships with the province and. Uh, the city, uh new daycare centers, so we have one at St. Rock, St. Augustine. We've been able to get one um in the works of St. Jude and and St. Andre. And Blessed Margarita's next. So we have been using it. We've also had funding uh from the federal government, the civilis funding. And that money was allocated into a number of our schools um in the Jane and Finch community that needed upgrades, so we are very grateful for that. So in order to get more funding, um. In my experience, we've, we need to work collaboratively with the different levels of government. So this is more of a provincial issue, yes, the province controls it. Um, working collaboratively, not only with our our partners at the province, but also federally to get the resource that we need in the community. So what I'm saying is it's not impossible. We have been able to achieve um a lot of great things, even in the past four years. And we're going to continue to get it. But I do want to be, I I know that not all the parents here are part of the Catholic School Board. We do collect EDCs at the Catholic School Board, which gives us. A leverage that the TDSB does not have.
And just a note, Ida, um before I get over to Kim, can you just? Can you just um let folks know what that exactly the ED is and what it stands for?
Charges. So when you have a new build in a community, uh, there's funds that are put away. For education, the education sector. Those charges are. The Catholic School Board is able to levy those charges. We get those charges um to to the Catholic School Board, whereas the public school board. Does not get those funds when there's new development. So the new condos that are going up at Weston Road and Shepherd, there's going to be uh money allocated. For for systems like school boards in in the community. Um, that's just one example. So whenever there's a new development going out, there's there's charges that are put aside.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And if I can add to that, uh, just very briefly, the reason why that's so is because Mike Harris gave a a tax cut basically to developers. When he was in government and that hasn't been changed since. It's been over twenty years. Massive development in the city of Toronto, the TCDSB can get them. Uh, uh, the the development charges, but the public system in the city of Toronto cannot. Uh, because of the population of the schools and the differences between the populations, the TCDSB has. Uh, uh, schools that are full in a capacity, the TC, the TVSB does not, it has empty schools, uh, right? Just demographic changes over time. I, and it does not qualify uh under the formula, so it doesn't get any of the money. We haven't gotten any dollars over the last twenty years. From all the development downtown.
That's not necessarily the case too. It's also because there was a lobbyist that went to lobby the TDSB to change some of the verbiage. To exclude us being able to get that money.
Okay, we will get into that conversation in just a second. I do want to give Kim her time to also answer the question. Kim, please let me know if you want me to repeat the question.
Please do.
Okay, um, so the question was in regard to our failing infrastructures in some of our schools. And how um if you're to be elected as a school board trustee, how you'd be able to address that um in your role.
I think. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can. Oh, sorry. Yes, I I should say, yes, I can. And folks, let us know if you can't hear us, okay? Please do. Thank you.
I think if I was to be elected, the first thing I would do is go into every individual school and check out the infrastructure for myself. I would probably bring someone of an expert to give me, you know, the breakdown of what exactly. Has to happen in each individual. I realize that each school is a different age and has different issues. Um, but I have to agree with Ida, you need to partner with your community. You need to find those in the community who can actually assist. I mean, granted, I realize that the TDSB, there are um, there are a lot of uh. I'm not even sure where to use it at this very moment, I'm sorry. Uh, hoopla, but. There's a lot of barriers, but I think i- in hindsight. I think that there are enough partnerships around that if we. If we put our minds together, we can actually collaborate and get a lot more things moving. In the direction of fixing some of these issues as opposed to just letting them, you know, push it to the side for another year, another two years or what have you. Um, the budget being, we already realize that the budget is, we're limited to how we can spend. So we know that that's not it, but we know how to condense what we spend and use it to the best of our ability for now. Um, we shouldn't be waiting till until something big happens before we decide that, you know, we're going to. To take the next step.
Thank you, Kim. Um, just one moment, just before, thank you. Thank you all candidates for answering that question. Um, folks, just keep in mind that you can also drop your comments or question in the chat. And one of us will pick it up to be able to um to share it with the candidates. So also keep in mind that you can. You can use the chat if you have a question. So just also keep that in mind. Um. So, um, Ida did bring up something very interesting about the, I hope I'm saying it right, Ida, is the ED or. Something fun. What is the funding again? Yes, a development charge. Sorry, I should know this. Yes, the development charge. And um. Maybe I I think this will probably be, if we can just. Each person can maybe give a little bit of insight into how we can maybe think about leveraging that also for the public school. Or if there's a possibility to even do that. I know Matthias talked about um the Mike Eric Scott on there. And also Nicole brought up the whole conversation on on a lobbyist piece. And Ida um spoke about how the um the Catholic School Board was able to benefit from that. But just one moment, I do see one person hand up. Um, Mel, do you have a question? If you can unmute Mel, um, so that she can answer her question, that will be great.
Hi. Hi, good night, guys. Sorry. There's a quick question um to Nicole. Uh, with the whole um EDIC. And getting the funding for just towards that way, what would be your timeframe that you're looking at? Right? Is this something that is doable within your, if you are elected, your four year?
That's a really good question. You're talking about the the development charges, correct?
Yeah.
Got it. So the way that the school board works is that you need to, you can never really do anything unilaterally. You have to build consensus with other trustees. So I assume that in this case, I would need to build consensus with other trustees in order to get this changed. Which I believe that I have the abilities to do based on my experience in the private sector and also in the community. And then on top of that, once we were able to get those decisions, then we would have to go and lobby the government to have that changed. I don't know how long that takes. It's a good question, but it's certainly a different avenue um that I don't know has been totally explored. Over the last couple of years, whereas advocacy and trying to build relationships with governments. Is something that has been explored many times and is definitely not time effective. So I believe that going and exploring this avenue would be a good alternative, maybe even both at the same time.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, and thank you, Melissa, for for your question. And also, um, our next person is Lindsay. Please go ahead, um, address, um, if it's for all the candidates or a specific candidate. So if we can unmute Lindsay, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, oh, this is for all the candidates.
Okay.
Um, but so one of the roles of school trustee is to help maintain the well-being of students. Um, I'm speaking as a teacher here, and after students suffering through the pandemic. How are you going to work with school boards in order to enhance student well-being?
Okay, so I will start with, we'll start with Matthias first. And Matthias, one minute, and then for all folks, okay?
A great question. I and and thank you for asking that. Um, we've gone through challenges over the last. Um, two years that the no one really experienced before. Um, I'll say uh this first, though, I'm endorsed by uh the Campaign for Public Education. I'm endorsed by a Labor Council. Uh, because they've seen some track record of the things that have done before. Uh, uh, respect. Uh, educators, I understand that educators are not getting the resources and they're not getting the salaries uh that they deserve to do the work. Uh, that they need, uh, but it all goes back to the funding formula, right? Like, it's it's easy for us to uh move reports and 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 challenge. Um, uh, you know, our educators, our administrators to do better, uh, but if we don't provide the the resources necessary. Um, the autism uh weight line is still over sixty thousand uh people long and so on. It becomes really difficult uh without the resources in the classroom uh to be able to provide quality education and a healthy environment and a secure environment. Uh, we still don't have air filters in all classrooms. We still don't have a number of different things uh that would be required to have. Uh, uh, things go back to normal, as they say, right? Um, and so a great question, a very difficult answer, uh, because I'm not sure that we have the res- the resources currently. Uh, to manage uh all the different challenges that we're still facing.
Thank you, Matthias. All right, I'm gonna go over to Kim. We're gonna do it a little differently. Kim?
Hi, can you please repeat the question one one more time? Thank you.
Lindsay, can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, I can definitely repeat it.
Thank you.
Um, so basically, um, one of the roles of school trustee is to help maintain the well-being of students. And after students suffering through the pandemic, how are you going to work with the school boards in order to enhance student well-being?
Good question. I think. Right now, as it stands, yes, we know that, you know, what kids have been severely. Struggling internally. I think what we need to do is we need to. Have wellness checks within the classroom. I think that it's important that we ask, how are you doing today? Um, those little simple little exercises might take ten fifteen minutes for the teacher to go around to ask. Realize we don't have the resources um. To to have, you know, a. A worker come in and talk every to every single student on a daily basis, but I think if we do our due diligence. As a community, we can do this. I mean, right now, as it stands. We're going through the process. I work at a wellness center, and right now, we're going through the process of. Creating a program where kids actually do playful activities. Not realizing that those activities are some sort of therapeutic um forms of uh tension release. I realize that in our, especially in the black community, that mental health is a taboo. Nobody wants to talk about it, no one wants to discuss it, but imagine if. You have a game where, or several games, where they learn, whether it's breathing techniques or it's some kind of hand movement. That in actual fact doesn't look obvious to the average person, that this is a technique that's actually helping. Calm them, helping the anxiety, and then some, if you start to implement those type of. Simplistic games or activities in a classroom. I think that that will go a a far, far being more way, it'd be go a far further way. Of helping a student down the road. I think that's something that it should be implemented from the school board. And all the teachers should be trained in. And then trickle down, obviously, eventually into the classroom where the teacher would then cha- train or just, if you will, play. With the students and allow the students the the possibility of just, just being themselves without actually knowing.
Sorry, Kim. Sorry, thank you. We'll do give an opportunity to expand. Um, and I'm gonna turn that over to. Ida and then Nicole, if we can stay within the minute, that will be great. Thank you. Just so that there's a ton of questions in the chat that I will try to get through.
This is a million dollar question, though, so that's very important, and there's no one stop solution. There's just. And we don't want to just put a Band-Aid approach to it. So what do we know? We know that twenty percent of our students are coming to school hungry right now. That we know, that is a fact. So that's why I worked with the State of Toronto to make sure that. Uh, every single student, so we partnered the City of Toronto with the Angel Foundation with it, which is our charitable organization. To get uh distribution of food cards to students who who need it. All of my schools in the Jane and Finch area have the nutrition program, so we're very blessed for that. The students are still coming to school hungry. Um, and that causes other issues at home because there's there's. They're they're just, they're, they're not confident um with what's going to happen tomorrow. So. That's an issue. Another issue, and I'm gonna try to keep this fast, is. I take a local school approach and not a board-wide approach with my school communities. So sitting down and listening to parents in our local schools and understanding what the concerns are. What are the concerns that I'm hearing over and over again? There's the mental health needs, tutoring supports, uh, lack of mentorship opportunities for the students. Um, bringing kids up to speed because there has been gaps in learning which have been completely exasperated because of COVID. So closing those learning gaps and getting the resources needed into our local school communities. So that's what I would be focusing on. Um, I've been focusing on it for the past four years. I'm going to continue focusing on for the next four.
Thank you, Ida. Thank you, Anda. And Nicole, um, if we can. For a minute, and then after that, we'll go to butterfly question, and then I'm definitely gonna get to some of the questions in the chat. So go ahead, Nicole.
So there was a survey conducted last year, and twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-seven students responded to that survey, so thirty-three percent of secondary students. And seven out of ten of those students felt like they were always under a lot of stress or pressure all the time or often. So there's a lot of work to do. I agree that the funding envelope again is an issue, but I want to stop talking about that envelope and talk about palpable. Things that we can do now in order to try to start solving the problem. So some of those ideas could be go having specific teams within schools. Maybe an administrator, a social worker, and a teacher, and have them undergo training. And aren't necessarily there to be daily mental health specialists, but are there to at least run professional development sessions for staff. And to run sessions and assemblies for school communities in order to bring awareness. I think there's lots of opportunity for us to continue to look to through this, look for solutions to this problem. By spending time talking to students and also talking to parents and really understanding what those fundamental issues are. And then being able on a school by school level to address them.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Nicole, uh, butterfly, your hand is up.
Thank you. Um, hi, good evening, everyone. Um. My name's Butterfly. I'm a resident of Jane and Finch. I have um. Children in the school system, grandchildren. Uh, I'm also a survivor of our school system. Um, there has been a lot of organizing happening locally in our schools and across the city. We saw that with getting. Police out of schools and more recently, um, the organizing that's happened in in the Peel District uh School Board. Um, so what needs to be done towards elimination of systemic racism and oppression? Within the policy practices and structures in the public school system.
And this is to all candidates, correct, butterfly?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna go back into the order. Nicole, one minute. I'm gonna be firm, guys, on the one minute, because there's a ton of questions in the chat. Thank you.
So I think in order to eliminate some of the systemic barriers that we see and feel in the Humber River Black or that that are felt in the Humber River Black Creek community. Is to make sure that there's fair representation around the table and to do a policy review of existing policies to make sure. That they are looked at for systemic racism issues, anything that might be unfair to communities like Humber River Black Creek. I also think that there's room in order to eliminate some of these systemic challenges. So look at community consensus. So when decisions are being made at the school board level to bring it back to the Humber River Black Creek community. And have them weigh in on how we should approach different things in order to make sure that we take into account. The different types of feelings that they might have towards policies and the trigger points that they might have towards racism in the system. I also believe that we need to train our staff better and board members better. To better understand and to watch out for and to watch for warnings for systemic racism and to make sure that it's not incorporated. Into new policies that are being developed within the school board. And to have better representation on committees within the school board to make sure that they are truly diverse. And committees that make up lots of different diverse people from across the city to make sure that all different viewpoints are being considered.
Um, just before we go over to Matthias, Kristin, if you can pull all the questions for me and just send them off to me. Again, because the more they're just coming in fast and just send them in. Thank you so much. Um, okay, Matthias, go ahead. One minute.
Uh. Thank you. Uh, it's so. Sorry, excuse me. Uh, we need a number of different things in order to get rid of anti-black racism in the schools. And I want to uh first congratulate and thank the folks on uh this call that helped to, amongst other thing, uh, remove police officers from our schools. Uh, we need culture relevant teachings and hiring. We also need to hire more black indigenous and racialized educators and administrators in the system. Uh, we also need to tackle the higher rates of suspensions and expulsions of black and racialized uh uh students in our system. Um, even though some efforts uh have been made towards them, the TVSB, we we still have a long way to go and. The black expulsion uh student rate is still much higher. And we also need to support things like uh the Center for uh Black Student Excellence, Urban Indigenous Education Center. Um, Afrocentric School and other uh programs, but we also need to uh figure out a way to flow some of these re- resources. Uh, into uh the mainstream uh of the school. We need more training. We need more uh resources uh be putting into. Uh, um, our our schools and our communities so that uh the resources can get to the students. Um, uh, that don't have direct access uh to some of the things uh that are available such as. Uh, um, uh, coaching um uh for a black graduation coaches and so on that are available to some schools in some places, but not everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthias, and we're gonna go on to Ida.
Thank you so much. So the Toronto Pathic District School Board currently has a three-year action plan. Uh, to ensure equity at all levels of our system. Um, we're str- we're striving to close the achievement gap. Enhance student physical and mental spiritual well-being. And to ensure equity of opportunity. And that's something that we're, we've been working on very closely for the past four years. Everything is on our website, so it's open to the public. And if any members of this um group want to go in, it's TCDSB.org. I know that we only have a minute, so I I need to just stress some of the more important points that we've been looking at. Uh, the staff need to start reflecting our student population, and we know that they're not currently reflecting our student population. So it's one thing that um has been at the forefront is the HR, the hiring practices. Um, the second one is uh cultural uh pedagogy. And making sure that PD is available for staff, um, all staff at the board level. Uh, assess learning, uh, assess learning, um, resources. Uh, and what we've done is every so often, we're updating our website uh to show that. You know, it, we're not just putting points on paper, we're actually taking action. And so we've been updating as we go through the equity action plan, updating all of the points. And I think there's four pages of points. Um, making sure that we support pathway choices and making sure we we've really given an equity focus. And it's something that I'm very proud of in the last four years, making sure that um. Priority resources are made into our local community schools. And we saw that during the pandemic. Uh, we made sure that all of our class sizes, it was actually me that motioned it, every single school in Humber River Black Creek. Had lower class sizes, higher staff, and priority access to devices. Um, so really taking that approach and 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 making sure that we we work together as a team locally and then at the board level.
Thank you, Ida.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to Kim. Kim, you have a minute. Go ahead. Hello, Kim. You have one. Hello?
Yes, okay, I'm I'm back.
Okay. Um, were you able to hear the question?
I only heard the last part of it. Can you just repeat that?
Sure, butterfly. Can you go ahead and repeat your question again? Thank you.
Sure, um. Uh, what needs to be done towards the elimination of systemic racism and oppression? Within the policy practices and structures in our public school system.
Thank you, butterfly. And Kim, you have one minute. Go ahead.
I think that's a long, that's a long-term goal, but I think if you're gonna start at school level. Uh, it it's gonna take challenging the teachers at every turn. That means every parent turns up every time there's a. Uh, uh, just a a smidgen or a thought of racial discrimination. I think that. There has to be a third party that gets involved. Um, granted, it may not be uh a person that can relate racially to what the parent is feeling or that child is feeling. But. I think that essentially you're gonna end up having to take some kind of sensitivity training. That would be the teachers, that would be the administrators, um, anyone that's related to the TDSP. Um, clearly, we have a lot of students that come from different backgrounds and whether it's religious, racial or otherwise. And I think at this point. or otherwise. And I think at this point there is so much going on, the only way to directly challenge or um, embrace, if you will, change is first to acknowledge it. And take the, take the advice from the parents, ask them what their opinions are. I mean, there has been, I remember a few years ago, there was um there was some kind of program that was looking into systemic racism in the TDSP, but it was actually investigated by the TDSP. I don't believe that you can actually do something like that. I think it has to be taken out of the TDSP's hands. And literally take into a third party, so that way they can get a better perspective.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you. I'm gonna go over to Suzanne. Please go ahead and ask your question. And then the next person is Carrie. And then um, folks, just before Suzanne. Um, keep in mind, guys, that the questions are also posted in the chat. Please feel free to answer the questions also in the chat if you're able to. If not, I'll also have an opportunity to read them out. Uh, so that you can directly answer them. Okay, so Suzanne, go ahead with your question. Thank you. Oh, please unmute Suzanne. My apology.
Thanks so much, Anna K. For organizing. Uh, good night, everyone. My name is Suzanne and I am a member of JFAB. I'm also a teacher with TDSP in the community. Uh, my question is, um many of the schools in the Jane Finch community are the lowest on the learning opportunity index. So that uh, rank schools in Toronto based on their socioeconomic need as well as academically. What is your plan to improve the ratings of our schools? Um uh, some people have spoken about the uh, various things socially and economically, but what about academically in our schools? Because some of our students are faring the worst. Uh, studies have shown that if students are not at the literacy rates that they should be at uh, by grade three, that it's very difficult for them to continue uh, learning to read. So what is your plan to improve our schools? Um, LOI rating. Uh, additionally, just really quick, what is your position on the COVID vaccines and the safety of our students in schools? Thank you.
So, sorry Suzanne, is that a two-part question?
It's a two-part question. I'm sorry. I tried to sneak it in there. Um, thanks.
Okay.
The last part is just quick. I am just curious to know where people are standing on the COVID vaccine of uh, in our schools.
So folks, I do know it's a two-part question, so I'll give a minute and a half. Um, and we will start with Nicole, then Matthias, then Ida, then Kim. Okay, a minute and a half. Thank you, guys.
I feel like you're starting with me every time, but I don't mind. It's not, it's not a bad thing.
Well, it's kinda easy if I just do it in order of how we have it. Yes, thank you.
Problem. So I think some of the ways that we can go about bringing up the LOI would be to have less staff turnover at our schools. So what I'm hearing from community activists in the, in in the Humber River Black Creek community is that the staff tend to come and go. And it doesn't allow students to really build a home within the school. And there's some opportunity to keep the staff in order to be able to build those relationships. And then to become a little bit more academically inclined by being able to build those relationships and having the right staff being in the school as well. So staff that are trained to be able to deal with schools that are lower on the LOI index. Another option would be also is to look at the stigma that are that is associated with our schools and try to bring that up. So as we know, there's a lot of stigma associated with some of the schools of Jane and Finch, which is unfortunate. A lot of parents that I have met in my canvassing have told me that they'll do anything to send their kids out of the ward. We need to improve our schools. We need to make them so that people want to come to them and stay at them. And I think there's opportunity to create policies, to create enthusiasm within the education staff and support staff in order to make sure that they, in order to make sure that they are attractive. Um, the more enrollment that we have that has a direct uh, impact on the funding envelope, the more enrollment in kids we have, the more money we get. The more opportunities we're given. It's a very vicious cycle. So it would be good to increase the enrollment to bring up that LOI. I think that that would have a direct correlation. With regards to vaccines, I'm pro-vaccine uh, and would want um, the students to also be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthias. Go ahead, please. A minute and a half. Go ahead.
And before we start, can you get a clarification from uh, Suzanne? I like the question, but just to uh, to understand the LOI, uh, score as I understand it uh, is a measure of external factors that affect uh, the chances and opportunities that the kids may have, right? Based on on things that happen in the home and in the community, right? Uh, so are we talking about academic achievement that you want to improve or the LOI scores themselves? Because that's uh, maybe a little bit outside of uh, the school board uh, to do to 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 help their parents get a better job, for example, it seems like, right? And I'm sorry, you're on mute.
If you can unmute Suzanne, that would be great.
Um, thank you. I think both of those things impact each other, right? Like if students are on low if if our students are placing low on the LOI, then of course their academic scores are also going to be low. So I think those two things are one and the same. If they are low on the LOI, they're doing low academically. So how can we raise both of those things?
I, it's so, um, trustee Lepetti was uh, talking about earlier, for example, about uh, the um, public health funded program that has and that gives snacks to kids in in our neighborhood. It's actually seventeen thousand kids uh, in the public and Catholic school system. Uh, you know, being able to provide kids uh, in our schools with the resources they may not be getting at the home uh, is very important. Uh, uh, which is why for for some time I've been working, for example, the Breakfast Club on on having a fuller breakfast program in a number of different schools in the neighborhood. Uh, and and they're about to start um, a lunch program at Brookfield. Um, without being able to provide these extra resources in the school, you're gonna have a really difficult time. Um, uh, improving those scores. Uh, uh, there's only so much pie. We talked about the funding formula, right? You can only split it so many different ways, but we're also not getting uh, uh, equity based decisions at the school board to provide our schools uh, with those extra resources that they would need. There's only a handful of schools in the neighborhood that do like Fergrove. Uh, well, when I was in school, uh, anything that happens in Fergrove right now with the special funding and their special grant, uh, well, that was happening all across the board. So uh, really significant cuts have made it really difficult for us to provide those extra resources that the kids may need, whether it's breakfast, whether it's after-school uh, resources, uh, where there's people helping you tutoring and 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 things like that, right? Um, so it's really difficult question. We're not gonna be able to uh, make all the, all those changes within this four-year term with the current government that we have. It's about uh, trying to stop the cuts that are coming, if anything. Uh, so we do need to look at uh, partnerships. And we need to look at type of resources that we may be able to bring into schools to help you and other educators in the neighborhood uh, with those issues. Uh, in terms of vaccines, um, I I I'm on my fourth vaccine. I'm I'm happy to take more when they make them available and uh, and I, I'm hoping that answers that question.
Uh, thank you, Matthias. I'm gonna go on to Ida and then Kim, and then after that we'll flip it and Kim will answer the first question.
Thank you so much. Okay, so this is a great question. So at the Toronto Catholic District School Board, we have what's called, and we introduced this in two thousand nine. It's called EPAN. And I know I speak in acronyms a lot and I want to apologize. EPAN stands for, and I actually want to change the name because I hate the name. The Equity Poverty Action Network Plan. And that's where we take a board-wide approach of putting money into um, schools in under-resourced communities. And by using those funds, we're able to keep some of the resources that we have already at the school and actually enhance them. Um, we went through one of the biggest budget cuts uh, in modern day history in two thousand eighteen, I believe, and we were still able to keep some of the fundamental programs. Um, like Fifth Block enrichment programs. Um and and we're we're trying to get these programs into every single one of the local schools. And I believe that all of our schools in the Jane and Finch uh, area have uh, what we call Fifth Block, which is a reading program. Right now, as you know, because you're a teacher, the province did give us um, tutoring for uh, students. Um, there's a specific amount allocated to each school. So all of our schools are taking full advantage of the allocation that the the province has given to us. And I'd like to advocate for more of it because you are right. We have seen studies that kids that are now in grade three are going, have gone into grade three this year, not knowing the basics on how to read, um, or basic math. And so we really need to look at these gaps and and build on them and make sure that we put the resources in our local schools. Um, I do want to say though, that uh, James Cardinal McWigan, which is our high school at Keel and Finch is one of the highest rated schools in the Northwest. So we have done extremely well in some of our local school communities. And the reason why we've done them is through partnerships. Um, in McWigan's case, we have York University in the backyard. You, York University has uh, gone into an incredible partnership with McWigan, giving the supports to the students there. Um, and this, the students are in the Shizum Program, the specialist uh, high-major uh, skills program. One hundred percent of the graduating class from twenty-twenty-one were accepted to post-secondary school. So it's a huge accomplishment that we've made. And it's the first time that we've had a waiting list to get into James Cardinal McWigan. So we are doing really well in our, in our secondary. I know that we need to do a lot more work in our elementaries. Um, but we are going to get there by working uh, with the focus that I have is local schools within the board. Um, so understanding what the local schools need and then bringing that forward to uh, fight for those resources at the board.
Thank you, Ida. So sorry, thank you.
No problem.
Kim?
Uh, well, I think at the end of the day, I think you you definitely need to energize the parents and get them involved. I mean, I realize it's difficult. Uh, math isn't exactly a favorite subject, but if they're motivated, even if it's by money. It sounds kind of, you know, harsh, but if they're motivated by, if a parent is motivated to say, hey, you know what? If I can help my kid, you know, achieve those As. And if he just succeeds and gets a, you know, he passes a test where he can actually see the difference. He sees what happens when he can excel. You know, that might go a lot further than just, you know, tell them to go to a random, random class to to a tutor. I mean, granted, you want them to go to that tutor, but make it fun. Make it accessible. Make it exciting. Most kids aren't gonna just go to it because you said to go to it. They're gonna do it because there's something, something more. Give the parents something to drive to. There has to be something to inspire them to get involved with their education. As far as the vaccine goes, I am pro-vaccine.
Thank you, Kim. And um, our next round of question. Kim, you're gonna go first, then we're gonna have um, Ida, then Matthias, and then Nicole. And then I'm gonna get to some of the questions in the chat. I really want to get to some of the questions in the chat. Um, and please, folks, in your time, if you have a minute to also answer some of the questions in the chat, please do. There's some of them that are specifically um, to each person. Um, and folks will also try our best to capture all the questions here and um, and be able to send the candidates. Um, the questions and also see if they can offer a respond that will also be able to share. So um, I'm gonna go over to Carrie and then I'm definitely gonna go into the chat to pull some of the questions. So if we can unmute. Um, Carrie, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie. Um, I've been lucky enough to be a, you know, part of the community since the early seventies. Uh, I've got family living in the area and I remember the first time I was at Driftwood and Jane area. I couldn't have been more than seven years old. So I've watched the community grow and change over the years and there's been some good and some some not so good, but mostly a lot of progress. What I am curious about is it's school board trustee is a tough gig and there's not a lot of time and a lot of, not a lot of the ability to do a lot of different things. So for each of the candidates, given that we want to prepare our children and our students uh, with skills and capabilities that will make them competitive and successful and to let them grow. And that we want to be able to take our adults and provide them the kind of educations and services that allow them to improve their lots for themselves and their family. If you had to pick out one thing, one goal, one specific desire that you would want to do beyond the work that a trustee does in the context of helping out individual families and individual students and addressing such things. But if you had one goal, what would that goal be?
Okay, we're gonna start with Kim.
One goal. Well. I would say the goal is to give every student the opportunity to do better. Give them the opportunity that most kids across Toronto outside of this, this area get. Let them experience, let them, you know, enjoy just being a kid. Without the, you know, the, the outside sources that that plague them. Let them grow into their own beings. That's as much as I can come up with at the moment.
No worries. Thank you so much, Kim. And I'm gonna go on to Ida, then Matthias, and then Nicole. Ida?
Thank you so much. I just have a clarification question for the gentleman that asked, is this in my capacity as a trustee if I'm re-elected?
Um, yes, of course.
Okay, so skill trades, uh, that's something that I've started and that's something that I'm very passionate about. We have a housing crisis. I spoke about this for the past, um few years now. We need to see the skilled trades and labor in our local schools. We've done, we've had a major focus on academics. But we need a balance and I want to see skilled trades and labor in our local schools, secondary schools. Um, within the next four years and building that. But not only that, even like culinary, uh, culinary, there's, there's been a lot of questions about why we don't have culinary schools in our, in our schools for kids to to take the classes that they would need to go on um, in post-secondary if they want to pursue a degree in culinary cuisine. Um, this is something that I was, uh, that I started working with, with the TDSP trustee currently, Christopher Memelidi. And his approach, um, because I did a lot of work with the TDSP and that's another partnership that I'm very proud of. Because it was the first time that the Toronto Catholic District School Board and the Toronto District School were worked together on many different projects. Um, and we saw that partnership. We saw other areas, other wards, uh, using, you know, the same kind of partnership to get things done for our local community. So that's something that I'm very proud of. And what Christopher was focusing on was to get away from um, the combustion engines uh, for mechanics, let's say, and start focusing on electric vehicles because that is our future and that's what the kids need to learn. Um, so that's something that I'm gonna focus on in the next four years if I get re-elected as trustee. And thank you so much for the question.
Thank you, Ida. And then we'll go on to Matthias. Matthias, go ahead, please.
Hey, thank you. I like the question. Um, because of course it is a, a really difficult job. As we're talking about the funding formula, we're talking about the provincial government and and all the barriers that we're putting in front of us. Um, and uh, my goal, uh, what I talk about uh, at the door slot, what I talk about with uh, folks at home, my friends. I I want to help organize our our school communities. Uh, I want the more parents participating um, in the, in the parent councils. I want more uh, students participating in different levels of activity, civic engagement. I want us to look at our our schools' community resources where we can organize, uh, learn and 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 help to uh, grow and heal our communities better. Um, why is that important? Uh, because I I won't be able to do the things I want to do alone. Uh, we are not a sad because uh, we haven't been uh, uh, the school boards, uh, been able to combat the changes that are happening provincially. Uh, uh, in order for us to start to change the direction uh, that the education system uh, is going uh, in, in Ontario, we need to start getting people more active. And in our communities, we struggle. Someone mentioned in the comments, you know, parents are having to pay uh, for the snack programs. Yes, because uh, the province only gives eighty cents a day per kid, thereabout uh, for each meal and it's not enough. Um, and it's Uh, thereabout uh for each meal and it's not enough. Um, and it's not enough. And and how would do we get to the point where we're not having discussions about uh the lack of resources? Uh, by uh having more buy-in from our communities about our public education system, one of the oldest in the world. Uh, and one of the best in the world for a very long time, but one that is in decay and and that needs uh to be revamped. And that's only gonna happen uh with grassroots organizing on the ground in each and every single one of our schools. So that's a really significant goal for me.
Thank you, Matthias and Nicole.
But what I'm hearing at this, what I'm hearing at the doors also, when I go and canvas, is that parents are barely able to put food on the table. And don't necessarily have the time to get involved in schools, as many of them are working more than one job or new to the country and are just trying to get settled. So what I'm looking to do is to make a second home for these students at school. So I'm looking, my goal would be to promote safe and inclusive communities within schools. So to make students make sure that when they come to school, it's an environment where they feel comfortable, where they feel included, where they feel free to express themselves, where their teachers look and act like them. Where they feel that they can be themselves authentically. And if I'm able to do that at our community schools, I think that it would have a ripple effect within the within the Hummer River Black Creek community and beyond.
Thank you. All right. Okay, folks, so we're gonna go over to some of the questions in the chat. Uh, we're gonna go back to a minute and we're gonna go with the same order again, uh for it will be um. You know what? I'll maybe I'll spruce it up a little bit. So you know what? There is some questions that is specifically um to folks. So we'll start with one question for you, Matthias, and then there are some other questions. So one of the question is to Matthias. What policy would you bring forward as a school board member to hire more BIPOC educators and to accomplish the goal of lowering suspensions thus expulsion rate? While keeping in line with the contracts with respect to lower and suspension rate for BIPOC students, what policies would you bring to work toward this? Are you talking about um changing the code of behavior?
Okay, I thank you. I so I put it in to to that already on the chat.
Oh, you did? Okay. If you can quickly, Matthias, we do have fifty minutes. Go ahead.
I more hiring of Black Indigenous and racialized educators can come from working alongside and partnering with existing groups like the Ontario Alliance of Black School Educators. Uh, who wrote a report on this um and that working across various boards, um uh basically working through our reports. Um, uh similar uh something similar happened at the Guild District School Board, uh we rise together. Um, that was the first part uh to the question, right? So there are a number of best practices that we can follow. Um, the second part of the question, uh lower suspension expulsion rates through implementing restorative justice practices. And there was a comment from uh an educator, I and I have to be very clear about this. I don't think uh reaching uh towards uh or greater racial equity. Particularly with anti-black racism in our schools should come at a cost uh of the safety and wellbeing of our educators. Uh, this should come together. Uh, and of course, we always go back to resources and what we're able to implement or not. Uh, but uh these ideas uh have long been advocated by Black community members and and people advocate for better education. Uh, uh, and this has to happen in partnership with our educators, with our administrators. Um, uh, but it comes together, it comes as a package. Very difficult to put these practices into place. Uh, if our administrators are uh reluctant to put some of these new uh best practices in place. Uh, or uh if we just do the sort of uh paper reporting of the practice without actually following through the resources and and the different elements that are required to. Uh, actually carry through uh um a policy that is very complex in nature.
Thank you, Matthias.
Good question. Um, and I'm not sure I have enough time for it, but yeah.
No, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna go back to um this other question is, do you support the up? Um, and this is for any candidates now. Do you support the upcoming um education worker strike and teachers negotiation for better pay and work condition? So uh we can probably start with Kim and um Ida and then Matthias and then Nicole. Kim, are you still with us? Sorry, I'm just trying to see if I see Kim. Okay, I will go over to Ida. Ida? Let me know if you need me to repeat the question also.
No, I think I'm good. I absolutely support them. They're the backbone of our system. And I mean, the schools just wouldn't be what they were without uh REAs and um custodial staff. It it's just, it doesn't work. So I one hundred percent support them. I'm really hoping that there's going to be some kind of miracle. We can't afford to have our schools closed again. Um, there needs to be some intervention. I'm hoping that something happens with the ministry. So this is happening at the ministry level and not at the school board level. At least not to Toronto Catholic, because we've settled with this local union already. I'm not sure with the TDSB. I just want to clarify that. Um, at the ministry level, though, I'm really hoping in pray, because. I I want to emphasize that our schools would not be able to function without these these uh. These employees, they are literally the backbone and I hope and pray to God that there is a settlement and that we can have a settlement without having to close our schools. Because our kids do really need to stay in school.
Thank you so much, Ida, Matthias, and then Nicole. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for your question. Uh, as I'm I'm uh endorsed by uh the Labor Council, the Campaign for Public Education because of my support historically. Uh, uh, for labor issues, uh, I'm a very strong supporter of of workers and their right to organize uh for better wages. Um, I I think uh we're terribly underpaying our educators, our administrators, our educator um support staff. Um, and I I said this morning, the negotiations are broken down and we're looking at a possible strike there uh as soon as the first weekend um in September. Um, it's very important for us to understand uh that what the ministry is offering um at the staff uh at the school boards. Uh, is basically a pay cut once you look at inflation. Um, and it's a very difficult position for the school boards uh to have to deal with. And and it will be the most significant thing that we'll have to do for the first few months to try and deal with these conversations. How do we bring people back uh to work? Uh, um, uh, if we end up going to strike and and that's what it looks like the ministry is offering to do, uh, which is terrible for uh the staff, for the students, for the families that will deal with uh what that means. Um, and uh you would hope uh that we would be doing better, but it's where we are unfortunately. Uh, but I do support the the workers and uh and and I'm hoping uh as I said, that we get a miracle, but uh it may not be coming.
Thank you, Matthias. Nicole?
I want to echo the same comments as everybody else. I'm also supportive. If we don't have good. If we don't have our education burgers happy and feeling that they paid well, our school environment will not be one that's positive for our students. So in this case, of course, I support I support their, I support their work action that they're taking. I I too agree that we can't afford to have any more time spent at a school. I won't repeat what everybody else just said. But my preference obviously would be to hopefully come to an agreement, I'm hoping, but at the end of the day, we'll see what happens. But yes, I'm supportive of their efforts.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Um. Uh, thank you for everyone that have been commenting um and for all the candidates for responding also into the conversation. We do know it's an hour and a half, and I know people have great questions and we hope to um to be able to provide some answer to all of their questions. And I really just want to thank the candidate. Thank everyone, the participants for being here tonight. I am just before we we have six more minutes, but just before I close, we will give about thirty seconds just quickly to each candidate. Um, just to wrap up any last minute um questions. We have some really good questions and and as I said, we just want to thank everyone for. On on off Wednesday night with many things going on for being here and and these very thoughtful questions. And um just thank you for all of the folks that are working in the backend um to make this possible. And that we definitely wanted folks to be able to connect with 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 some of the candidates or with the candidates as much as possible. Um, and just and to create a process that you're able to do it. So um I'm gonna start with Ida first. If you can give us in a quick nutshell in thirty seconds, just to wrap up your thought, that would be great.
Okay, so I just want to say thank you to everybody for being here this evening. Um, elections on Monday, I just really hope that we go vote. We've had some of the lowest voter turnout in the past elections. Get out the vote. Um, I'm hoping that you're gonna support me on the ballot, but. Even if you're not, just get out and vote. I put my, I'm gonna put my information in the chat. If you need to reach out, uh feel free to call me, email, text me. Um, I usually have a really good response rate, usually between twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and I look forward to hopefully working with you all again and. On October twenty-fifth. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ida. Matthias, the same for you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I've uh uh over the last two years in this neighborhood, I've started after-school programs, tertiary scholarships, I've started breakfast programs, music program. I've started charitable organizations to help you because I want to help students do better in our neighborhood. I bet I want to go to a school board because I want to uh help create systemic change uh to create better opportunities for our youth. Uh, I'm I'm hoping uh folks will support me. Um, I will drop off my information as well. When it uh lastly, just thank all the organizers for helping to put this together. It's a lot of work and thank you, and it's never appreciated the work. Uh, and and everybody else for participating tonight.
Thank you so much, Matthias and Nicole. Go ahead, please.
I'd also like to thank the organizers for putting together such a wonderful event. It was great to be able to hear even more questions from the community that we've been getting at the door. I want to say that it is time for a breath of fresh air within our leadership here in Hummer River Black Creek. And I believe that I'm the one that will most effectively deliver change. Our kids in our schools deserve better. So on October twenty-fourth, I'm hoping that you'll go and support me at the polls. Uh, we need to get out the vote. Again, voter turnout is low. And I believe that with everybody turning out and voting correctly, we can make some fantastic changes to our community and make it even better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just by any chance, is Kim King still here? By any chance? I do want to give her an opportunity if she has anything to say last minute. Kim? Okay, all right. So I'm going to, please drop your information um so folks can reach out to you if they have any more questions. I do want to thank folks once again for being here and um and, you know, and to also just really to create maybe in the future more spaces. And start these conversations very early on um so that we can have more of these conversations and do much more follow-ups with our candidates. Not just for um trustee, but for counselors, for all of our um different levels of government to really start the conversations really early in our community, in our community. Yes, what does turnouts are low. Um, and there's many reasons for why they are and and to really, how can we address those? And um and bring back the momentum and this honor our right to our democratics to vote and also have representation. And um just, you know, just to everyone, thank you so much and um. And we wish everyone the best of luck and thank you. And guys, we will definitely follow up through some different means on social media. As much as possible to get some some of these questions answered, and I know a lot of our candidates have dropped comments and answers. So once again, thank you, Ida. Thank you, Matthias. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Kim, for being here. Thank you, everyone. Please have a wonderful remainder of your night. And thank you. And please go out and vote on October twenty-fourth. Thank you. If we can stop the recording, guys, that will be great. Um, also.